Good evening, everybody. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, let the record show, excuse me, all board members are present. For announcements, I just want to congratulate our unified basketball team for winning their first game of the season. Congratulations to all of them. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak on an agenda item? Can I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the March 2022 planning session, which were amended, the April 7, 2022 regular meeting, and the April 12, 2022 budget adoption, as well as the April 27, 2022 planning session? Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have several recognitions we'd like to do tonight, and with that, I would like to introduce our Superintendent Miss Burns.
Good evening. So tis the season to express our appreciation to many members of our community. We do have a number of recognitions tonight, as Mr. Tussi mentioned, and I will start with those who will be honored this month at the Annual School District Awards Dinner, sponsored by SPO Education Services, of which the district is a member. It's a program that recognizes individuals in a variety of different areas of service to a school district, including school board, teaching, administrative, support staff, and community, who demonstrate outstanding service to their school district and their community. So, at the risk of embarrassing our honorees, I would like to call them down. Mr. Steve Geller, who is receiving the community award. Mr. Andrew O'Farrell, who is receiving the ministry award. And Mrs. Leander, who is receiving the support service award. So typically, this dinner, don't go anywhere, this dinner is held in March, but because, you know, of COVID concerns at the timeline it was planned, it was delayed until May, which is kind of even better now, something else to celebrate. There is a very nice journal that is put together, it's really a lovely evening, and I am going to read the journal entries for each of these three recipients, so you can watch the blush. Stephen Geller's resume of service to the West Islip School District and community is remarkable. He served on the Board of Education of this district from 2006 through 2021, including 12 years as president. He was an executive committee member of the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association for over seven years, including a term as Suffolk Vice President, and was a member of the Executive Board of Refit from 2009 to 2021, serving as president from 2017 to 2020. Mr. Geller provided leadership as Manitoc Elementary School PTA President and coached teams for various community athletic leagues, including Little League Baseball and Softball, Youth Basketball, and the West Islip Soccer Club. He currently is the Sactico State District Chair for the Boy Scouts of America, a position he has held since 2010, and was appointed recently to the Ice Hook Town Environmental Committee. Mr. Geller is a passionate, dedicated leader who is unwavering in his commitment to the school district, community, and public education, so congratulations, Steve. Louisian Dunn has been a dedicated member of the West Islip School District staff since 1996. Her journey started as a substitute paraprofessional and has taken her to the Office of Buildings and Grounds, where she has worked tirelessly, I might add, since 1998. As Senior Office Assistant to the Facilities Director, Mrs. Dunn has demonstrated her exceptional professionalism and dedication time and time again. She provides leadership in an environment that can be hectic at best and chaotic at worst, and does so with patience, humility, and a robust sense of humor. Mrs. Dunn is reliable and trustworthy, and her dedication to the district and community never wavers. She's a valuable asset to West Islip School District. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. As Principal of Beach Street Middle School, Andrew O'Farrell has distinguished himself as an instructional leader who has brought meaningful and effective change to the West Islip School District. Mr. O'Farrell maintains the highest ethical standards and shares the district's vision to support the improvement of learning and the learning environment for students. He actively engages teachers and parents to support student success and provide students with a learner-centered curricular program. Mr. O'Farrell is a visible presence whether addressing his building responsibilities or as a dynamic leader at the district level. He's an integral member of myriad district committees and serves as President of the West Islip Association of School Administrators. Mr. O'Farrell is a reflective practitioner and seeks continuous self-improvement, which results in enriched programs for students and thoughtful professional development for faculty and staff. And might I add, not a day goes by that I either don't see him at my door, or a phone call, or an email with, "I have an idea," which is sometimes frightening for me. But please join me as we honor these three outstanding members of our school community. Thank you. Thank you. So speaking about outstanding members of the community, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, yesterday was National School Nurses Day, and on April 27, we celebrated our administrative assistance. Tonight, we would like to recognize them. I'd like to invite Mr. Dixon and Mr. Kane to the front of the auditorium. Mr. Dixon is the President of WHIDA, Mr. Kane is the Vice President. So last year, I stated that there has never been a year that has challenged our educators more than the previous year. I take that back. Although we have not had to struggle with some of the COVID-related hardships encountered in 2020, 2021, this year has been just as difficult. Nevertheless, our teachers have steadfastly prioritized our children. I still marvel at the intense amount of work and dedication that they put into their jobs day in and day out on behalf of their students. I'm proud to say that we are back on track, and our instructional and extracurricular activities are as close to normal as they've been since March of 2020. That could not have happened without the careful attention of the people standing here representing you, thank you, Mr. Tussi, all of our West Islip teachers. They ensure that our school environment is healthy and safe and productive, and that our students have the support they need to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally. So on behalf of the West Islip Board of Education and the entire West Islip School District and community, I'd like to recognize our teachers for their outstanding and tireless efforts on behalf of our students. Thank you. Okay, next up, our school nurses. Could I ask Mrs. Kerrigan, Mrs. Kerrigan to join me? So yeah, Mrs. Sharon Kerrigan, who's President of our School Nurses, and Mrs. Christine Kerrigan, who is Vice President. So you've heard me mention that this year continues to be somewhat atypical of what we would consider a normal school year. This year, our school nurses continue to face the profound challenge of ensuring both student and staff safety. And of course, unfortunately, some of the numbers we're seeing now, I know that you're facing increasing challenges in your offices in the last few weeks. So while the COVID guidelines have changed what seems to be on a daily basis sometimes, our school nurses stayed the course. It's said that you can't control the wind, but you can adjust the sails. Well, our school nurses did a lot of adjusting for all of us. Even before the pandemic, being a school nurse was a challenging role, with most schools having just one nurse for hundreds of students. School nurses are often the first responders to many youth issues and are known to go without lunch more often than they do in a typical school year. Not only are they there to address a skinned knee or intervene in the case of an allergic reaction, which happens more often than you would think, or to spend dearly needed medication, they are often there to address issues first revealed in school, including mental health challenges, food insecurities, and other impediments to learning. So in honor and with great appreciation and respect for the work they do each day, we recognize our West Islip School Nurses. Thank you. Okay, finally, last but not least, may I invite Mrs. Dunn back down and Anne Marie Schneider. Mrs. Dunn is the President of the Secretarial Unit, and Mrs. Schneider is the Vice President. And Mrs. Beecher, are you going to be joining them? Anybody else? You're more than welcome, it's a photo op. Vosses, come on down. And I might say, in more buildings than not, they are the voss, right? I know in my office, Trish is the boss. So many good things to celebrate, and next year, we're bringing our 10 academic leaders down, so we're really excited about that, too. Ladies. So last but certainly not least, we take this opportunity to acknowledge the fine work of our administrative assistants. They are often the first in the office each day and one of the last to leave. They address many issues and concerns before they even reach the desks of our administrators or the mailboxes of our teachers. They keep us organized and often serve as the glue that holds each school department and community, each school community and department community together. So ladies, on behalf of the West Islip Board of Education, the district, community at large, whom you interact with on a daily basis, and myself, thank you to all of our administrative assistants for their efforts to keep us all on track each day of the year. And that concludes our recognition portion of the evening. Mr. Corinso, thank you for joining us tonight. Have good pictures?
I think one more congratulations is in order for everybody to acknowledge tonight. Okay, now on to personnel with Mr. Taylor.
May I have a motion? May I have a motion for the approval of the personnel agenda as listed in your background?
Discussion?
Mr. Tussi, I have a few words on discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. McCann.
So it's my pleasure to recognize the first person on the list who's retiring this evening, and it's been my wife, Christine McCann. It's listed as a resignation. That is just the way the wording of the contract is. A resignation is if you're not 55 years old or 30 years, you officially resign, but it is a retirement from the school district. She's been an office student and a teacher here for five decades, 80s, 90s, 2000s, 2010, 2020. She's been a special education teacher since 1993 and has touched the lives of thousands of special students. She's dedicated her life to this school district and to the craft that she loves. She's never looked at this as a job, it's just her calling, vocation, and I'm just honored to be able to sit here tonight and talk about Christine as a person, as a mother, as a teacher of the district. You know, many people ask me if you love teachers, and I say, I do love teachers, and there's one I especially love, so much that words tonight couldn't describe how much that means to me. She's dedicated her time to the district, and it's time for her to be home and dedicate the time for our family, and we're blessed to be able to do that. So I would just like to speak on her behalf and wish her beautiful retirement for a beautiful woman who's touched so many lives in this district. So congratulations, my lady.
Ms. Burns also has something she would like to add.
Congratulations to Mrs. McCann. I'd also like to acknowledge, because this is a consent agenda, the retirement of Joseph Guarino, custodial worker one, after 16.8 years with the district, Paula Marandino, who's also a custodial worker, after almost 28 years in the district. And in the April meeting, I failed to mention our teaching assistants, who are also retiring this year, all three of them after 21 years of service, Claudia Cabot, Mary Kinsley, and Jody Marinello. Wish everyone much good health and happiness in their retirement, and I look forward to joining you.
Congratulations, everybody. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Curriculum update, Mrs. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. On April 27, I, along with several other administrators and staff members, had the opportunity to attend the grand opening of Photo Frames, a mock business that was created by high school students in our virtual enterprise class. At the event, board members of Photo Frames shared their business plan and information related to their product, which was glasses that actually had a button on them, so anything you are looking at that you would like to take a picture of, you just put the button on your glasses, and there you have your picture. Under the direction of Mrs. McCrely, this was a year-long, real-world learning experience that provided the students with an opportunity to go through all of the steps necessary to create a business. Their work was very impressive, and I'm extremely happy to report that next year, we will have two sections of virtual enterprise at the high school, so that more students have an opportunity to take part in such an experience. The Seal of Bile Literacy is an award given by school districts in recognition of students who have studied and attained a high level of mastery in two or more languages by high school graduation. Seniors looking to attain the Seal of Bile Literacy are in the process of delivering presentations to a panel of staff members, including administrators and teachers, and then responding to questions related to the presentations, all of which are done in the target language. We currently have 11 seniors looking to attain the Seal of Bile Literacy. I've had the pleasure of sitting in on the presentations, and to say they have been impressive would be an understatement. So good luck to them, and thank you to Mrs. Patty for facilitating the process. College Awareness Day was celebrated district-wide on May 2. The purpose of the day was to really recognize our senior class in regard to their post-graduation college plans, and to get conversations going K-12 in regard to college being attainable for all students. Graduating seniors attended college in the fall, wore their school shirts or t-shirts or sweatshirts to school, and staff members and students throughout the district were encouraged to wear a t-shirt or sweatshirt representing their favorite college. Thank you to Mr. Arini and the administrative team for facilitating this district-wide activity. Thank you, Mr. Tussi.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Morrison. On to our board committees. We'll begin with Education Committee, Mr. Antonello.
Thanks, Mr. Tussi. The Education Committee met Tuesday, May 10, Beach Street Auditorium, in attendance with committee members Debbie Brown, Anne Marie LaRosa, and myself. Other board members present included Mr. Capatella. Administrators present included Superintendent Burns, Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Morrison, and Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Pilati. The board received updates on state testing. Forty-two percent of the district took the state math test, which was up from last year, factoring in opt-outs. There was an update on the IVAP exams. Testing hadn't begun on April 28. Small paper tests this year, the initial reaction and report from the kids was confidence in their performance. There was an update on foundations. Pre-K training will begin next. We're in the final sessions of K-1 training this month. There was an announcement that there's going to be a K-12 curriculum review. There will be a full written review by grade and by subject next year. There was an elementary literacy update as well. Mrs. Morrison presented the board with a full accounting of the elementary literacy program, the board discussion, and review. And the meeting ended at 7:30.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Antonello. On to Finance Committee with Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you. The committee met on May 10. Committee members present, Anne Marie LaRosa, Peter McCann, and yourself. Board members in attendance, Richie Antonello, Debbie Brown, and Tom Capatella. Administrators present, Superintendent Burns, Elise Pilati, and Dawn Morrison. The purpose of the meeting was to review the warrants for the month and discuss pertinent fiscal matters. The meeting was called to order at approximately 7:30 p.m. The following were presented and accepted by the committee. The Treasury reports for the school district funds for the month of March, and the extracurricular funds for the month of February and March, the payroll summary report, and the financial statements for the month of March, the internal claims audit report, and the system manager report for the month of April, payroll certification for April 15 and April 29. The committee received the warrants for the month. We discussed and reviewed the following board agenda finance items. Approval of budget transfers, donation from Suffolk Transportation for $2,000, approval of surplus for two Imperial double ovens at the high school, approval of a 2021-2022 health services contract with Amityville School District, and approval of 2022-2023 consultant services contract for the EEN school for autistic children, and approval of numerous bids listed in the board agenda for the year 2022-2023. We also had a couple of other discussion items. The external auditors, R.S. Abrams, will be on site this week to do the interim audit testing. And the IT Department and the School Safety Department notified the district that additional service storage for the district cameras is necessary. They're proposing an enterprise-class storage solution that will help the, right now, we went from 100 cameras to the current 406 cameras. The new system will be able to give us a 90-day retention rate for all cameras. It includes the upgrade of the workstations and five years of support, and will provide redundancy and failover playback availability. The total cost is $304,000, including the upgrade of workstations. Currently, it's an unplanned and unbudgeted expense, but the board agreed that we will make the investment in this current school year. We have some debt service costs related to the SOL project that will not be due until next year. That was already in the budget, so that was almost $390,000. So we're going to use those funds to expedite getting these additional service storage. The meeting adjourned at 7:48.
I just wanted to add, that same evening, prior to our committee meetings, we had a budget presentation, so it's pertinent to financial matters. So I would just like to let everybody know that that budget presentation was video, correct? Yes. Available on the website. So if you'd like to learn a little bit more, if you missed any of the traveling show, and if you would like to learn about the budget, it's there for everybody to take a look at. Have any questions, let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. On to Building and Grounds with Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The Buildings and the Grounds meeting also met on Tuesday, May 10. All board and committee members, with the exception of Mr. Tussi, were in attendance. Administrators present, Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Morrison, Mrs. Pilati, and Mr. Bossi. We reviewed all of the capital updates on the projects. We had the, we had our project managers from BSS there to give us an update on the bond work, Phase 6, which is the Manitoc generator, and also the Beach Street generator. There's about a 40-week lead time, but the generator for Manitoc looks like it's coming in under budget and was shipping May 17, so we're getting closer. The Beach Street generator is also under budget, and the lead time is also 40 weeks. We're getting close to awarding that bid. We got an update on the district ceiling and lighting updates. The bid's open. We have planned to award for the summer. We've got 2021 capital project, the estate fencing, as we all know, was completed. The 2021 capital reserve projects ongoing on the water fountains, the air conditioning in the office suites, the Bayview parking lot, renovations to the bathrooms in the high school in Bayview, stage huts at the high school, and a walk-in freezer. We had a request from the West Islip Youth Soccer Club to relocate a shopyard area at Udall, so they can give us more space, and we worked with them and working that out. They will pay for the cost of moving that, so they'll give them more space on the fields. So everyone was agreement. The Smart School Grant, we've got the money set aside to build a new security vest deal in the district office, so that can be done this summer. So we went through the project plan for that. We also talked about, it's been mentioned many times, on the capital reserve budget proposal for this year, the ballot next Tuesday. One of the items is the Paul Jable parking lot, which we're all in agreement that something needs to be done. We're short on spots there, and we've got pre-K coming in and out. We've had multiple designs kind of laid out for us, and we are in the process of selecting one that is fit financially and give us some relief for some additional spots. We haven't gotten the final bid. There's $800,000 earmarked for the capital reserve project next week to be voted on. It doesn't look like it'll be that amount. That's a not-to-exceed number. That number may come in a little more than half of that, and it'll give us relief that we need. We would consider that potentially Phase 1, and then we'll re-sculpt the project after we see the success of that project. So the committee adjourned, and we'll forward to the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Special Education Committee, Mrs. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The Special Education Committee met on May 11 at 8:30 a.m. via teleconference. In attendance were myself, board member Ron McGinnis, administrators Dawn Morrison, Jean Dowling, and Gail Dowdery. We discussed changed placements, and in fact, the CSC meetings were ongoing. The meeting adjourned at 9 a.m. Thank you, Mr. Tussi.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Brown.
I just asked, Mrs. Brown, I know you were trying to coordinate a special education tour, right, a road show? Were you able to do that?
We're coordinating.
Okay.
Excellent work.
Okay, tonight, the Policy Committee has its second reading on the following potential policy changes. Number 3283, agenda neutral single occupancy bathrooms. Number 5324, capital project change orders. Number 5520, the extra classroom activities fund. Number 7122.2, release time for students. Number 7218, class ranking and weight upgrades. Any questions on any of those? Okay, Safety Committee, Mr. Capatella. Okay, we are, can I have a motion then for approval of all policy readings? Someone? Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Thank you, Mrs. Morrison.
Okay, now...
Did you go?
You're ready.
Okay. Good evening, y'all. The Safety Committee met on April 12th at 08:30 at Paul Jableu Elementary School. Members present, Ms. Burns, Ms. Morrison, Ms. Pilati, Mr. Taylor, Dr. Bridgman, Mr. Aran, Mr. Maniscalco, Mr. Mark Quaid, Mr. Mullins, Mr. O'Farrell, Ms. Brack, Ms. Williams, and myself. All right. The items discussed, technology, we had a discussion, there was a need to upgrade cameras throughout the district, and throw some maintenance on them, and put some more in for surveillance. Surveillance, it was done and completed. We had two new door strikes to Beach Street. The scholarship system in high school was installed, makes it easier for students to check in and check out. We've had a couple of vaping incidents in the high school, which will be discussed later. Solar panel inspection commenced, firehouse, fire department lighting inspections on the 28th through April. They start in Bayview, and they'll go up. Each school has these things getting installed. We put exterior door signs on your windows of all high school buildings and elementary school buildings, so it's a perfect responder response, they can see what building they're going into, what room they're going into. And we secured a phone item. End of drill.
Safety Committee. Aware that there's a potential freight train coming back?
If I may, and you may have said it, Mr. Capitello, and I apologize if you didn't, but Mr. McAlvey and Mr. Bossy were in attendance as well, I should have made sure the manager reflected that, the regular agenda. Who's the guy that runs the show?
Who?
All right, thank you again. And our final committee, Health and Wellness, with Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The Health and Wellness Committee met on Tuesday, May 10th, at 9:30 in Paul Jableu's cafeteria. We had 14 committee members in attendance. This was actually our last Health and Wellness meeting for the year, so we reviewed the financial report. We reviewed the spring into wellness event that's going to be happening next Thursday, May 19th. We've got about 30 people registered so far, so that Health and Wellness event, we've got four different stations where you can come in and really have a night with your family. It's meant for students from K through eighth grade. We've got a yoga station, we've got an art station, and a music station, all tied around the mindfulness program that we put into the district several years ago. And it's about an hour and a half program. We're giving out pizza. You can register on myschoolbucks.com. It's $10 for a family of four. It's a great event. I did it with my family three years ago, prior to COVID. It's just a nice night to kind of get together and really share some moments, so encourage everyone to come to that event. The Health and Wellness Scholarship, we had two chosen, $250 scholarships that will be presented June 6th at the senior awards night at the high school, so congratulations to those two winners. We ordered motivational posters, five for each building, which were distributed at that meeting. We selected the date for next year's color run. This year's color run was the largest attendance that we've had to date. That date is Sunday, October 16th. At this point, there is no rain date for that, so we're hoping for a nice sun. We are looking for T-shirt sponsors, we'll have a DJ, and it's just a great event. If you haven't been to that, it's really for children and adults of all ages. It's about a one-mile walk-run around the campus of the high school, and you get blue and orange dye thrown on you, which is exciting, because it doesn't come out for weeks, but a great event for the children. The 2022-23 Health and Wellness dates were posted for next year, and we appreciated everyone who attended the committee meetings all year. As we all know, mental health and wellness is really on the forefront of all our minds, and committees like this really help drive programs. So we are sending out a Health and Wellness survey. We're going to start it at the event next week, and hopefully send it out district-wide for the types of events that you would like to see and participate in for Health and Wellness, whether it be a vaping seminar, a stress relief, so you'll get, be part of that survey, and we can then tailor programs next year around those events. So again, that was the last meeting of the year, and we hope everyone has a great summer, and we look forward to another great year next year.
I just want to comment on that color run. Mr. McCann and I were actually together during that run. He's slightly better in dark, so he was in front of me, and we were approaching a group of students who were very excited to hit Mr. McCann with the blue dye, and he ducked at the right time and made me look like a smirk the next 10 days. So I hadn't forgotten about that, and I just wanted to thank you again. Okay, onto our financial matters with Ms. Pilati.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The Treasury's report for the month of March had a beginning balance of $76,868,338.42 and an ending balance of $83,259,408.83. We have a motion for the approval of budget transfers 4163 through 4179 for the general fund, and 4165 through 4182 for the capital fund.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the 2022-23 bids as listed on the agenda.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the 2022, 2021-22, and 2022-23 contracts as listed on the agenda.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the two surplus Imperial double ovens at the West Isaf High School.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of a donation from Suffolk Transportation in the amount of $2,000 for a West Isaf High School student in recognition of the boys' varsity soccer New York State champions.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Pilati. Could I have a motion for the approval of the Eastern Suffolk Bosie's Classroom Use Agreement from July 5th to August 12th, 2022? Some move. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Could I have a motion for the approval of the Eastern Suffolk Bosie's Classroom Use Agreement, August, from July 5th, sorry, to August 12th, 2022? Some move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Onto our Superintendent's Report with Ms. Burns.
And Mr. Tussi. In addition to celebrating the fine work of our teachers, school nurses, clerical team, and our school award recipients, who were acknowledged earlier this evening, we have a number of other achievements to celebrate. For the fifth year in a row, the West Isaf School District has been recognized by the NAMM Foundation as one of the country's best communities for music education. The organization recognizes the outstanding efforts of teachers, administrators, parents, and students, and actually, the community at large, who are making music part of a well-rounded education for every single child. So we're very proud of that achievement, and I'm sure Mr. Outliner will be dropping off another poster, which is starting to look really, really nice in the offices. I'd also like to congratulate Ryan Benomo, our lead teacher for engineering technology. Mr. Benomo has been awarded the 2022 STEM Star Award by the Long Island Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Leadership Association, that's the STEM Association, at an award ceremony last week. So we are very proud of Mr. Benomo and his efforts on behalf of our students in that arena. For the last three weeks, as recently as last evening, I've had the great pleasure to attend many concerts in a number of the buildings throughout the district, elementary, middle school, as well as high school, as well as some athletic events. We are putting the finishing touches on our end-of-year activities to recognize our students who are moving on from the fifth, eighth, and 12th grades of course, and we anticipate that all events will be held in spectacular fashion, so we're really very excited about that. Mr. Aran just texted me that we opened, as Mr. Tussi mentioned, our unified basketball season earlier this afternoon with a win over Lindenhurst. Our first home game will be held at 4:00 on Tuesday afternoon, which coincides with Celebrate Education, and the district art show, and the budget vote. So if you would like to have a really enjoyable afternoon, I would encourage you to come down and cheer on our unified basketball players, take the opportunity to vote in our lower gymnasium, and also take a look at the musical performances, the artwork that our children have, you know, put on display for all of you. There's some really, really interesting and talented students in this district, and their artwork is really spectacular. We are also going to be having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for our planetarium, a ribbon-cutting ceremony for one of our new technology rooms that use primarily, it's an equipment room used by our robotics team, as well as our students during the course of the day. A lot of good things to share with you, so that you can celebrate education as we do every day. So please do come down and vote on Tuesday between the hours of 7:00 in the morning and 9:00 in the evening.
All right, thank you very much, Mrs. Burns, and that would have been my notice and reminder as well, is Tuesday, the 17th, come out and vote for the budget and the trustee election. At this time, we're going to open the floor to the public, and our first speaker of the night will be Mr. Keith Muller.
Hi. I'm a father of an incident involving a child who pulled a knife on a teacher, and was allowed back in the class just a week later to sit next to a kid that was traumatized and could have killed. Last month, Mrs. Burns said it was your policy not to comment on how to keep our children safe, put this on record, and I just want to let you know that's completely unacceptable. All of the children in Manitowoc are at risk of being violent or deadly attacked by a dangerous child, and the parents somehow are not allowed to know anything about that. How can I be your policy? Since Mrs. Burns is the victim, it's a matter of the law against children, I'd like to ask the board or show of hand. Who supports her decision to allow the situation to continue? Anybody?
So, yeah, this is not something that the board will vote on, and it is policy that we do not discuss students with other people that, you know, they don't belong to. And we are very aware of the situation, we are very sensitive to it. Our district has been working tirelessly to ensure the safety involving all students, staff, parents, everyone that comes on school rounds and near school rounds.
Is it not the board's job to communicate and supervise? Something that seems to be outrageous? Does the board know all this? Is this just...
Mr. Muller, you don't have all the facts, and we are not going to comment on any act... You don't have all the facts, and we are not going to comment on this situation.
So the board has nothing to say? All of you are going to sit there, understanding that this is right?
What we have to say is that the district is following all protocols and doing everything in our power to ensure the safety of all students, all staffs.
Your protocols are keeping our children at risk intentionally, and if the board doesn't do anything about it, then you are all complicit in this. If this kid does something else, and someone gets hurt or killed, you are all responsible for this. Your job is to speed up and tell Mrs. Burns that this is outrageous. If you choose not to, then you are all involved for this. I'm just letting you know.
Okay, well, we thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Consider yourselves one.
Okay, speaker number two is Mrs. Hanchel.
Hi, everybody. Hi, everybody. All right, so if I do go over, I respectfully ask for a few more minutes, because it's not a very crowded meeting tonight. So if the New York State Senate bill, S2584, passes in 2022, it'll go into effect in 2024. I don't know what's so funny, but some of you are already laughing and smiling at me up there, but...
No, we're not.
Okay, well, there's smirks, so I just want to point that out for the record. Okay, so I'm going to continue, and by the end of, by the end of second grade, children, your teachers will be teaching our children, who are not my children, that they're gone from the district in two months. List medically accurate names for body parts, including the genitals. Define gender, gender identity, and gender role stereotypes. Discuss the range of ways people express their gender and how gender role stereotypes may limit behavior. By the end of third and fifth, these are some I picked out, by the end of third and fifth, they'll have to explain common human sexual development and the role of hormones, sexual feelings, masturbation, mood swings, timing of puberty onset. They'll have to describe the roles hormones play in physical, social, cognitive, and emotional changes during adolescence, and the potential role of hormone blockers on young people who identify as transgender. They've mentioned nothing about the dangers it does to those children, and the fact that they can never have children once they start them. They'll have to define and explain the difference between cisgender, transgender, gender non-binary, gender expansive, gender identity. Remember, this is by the end of fifth grade. Define sexual orientation and differentiate between sexual orientation, gender identity. By the end of, between sixth and eighth grade, they'll have to analyze how peers, family, and persons intersecting identities can influence attitudes, beliefs, and expectations about gender, gender ideology, gender roles, and gender expression. They'll have to define vaginal, oral, and anal sex. They'll have to describe the steps to use barrier methods correctly. That would include external, internal condoms and dental dams. This is again by the end of sixth grade. Ninth and 10th graders will have to describe effective ways to communicate consent, personal values, and desires as they relate to intimacy, pleasure, and sexual behavior. So they're discussing sexual pleasure. Next, explain the human reproductive and sexual response system, including differentiating between internal and external body parts and their functions. Okay, I'm going to just skip over, because I know I'm going to run out of time. 11th and 12th graders will be having to analyze cultural and social factors such as sexism, homophobia, transphobia, racism, ableism, and classism. Again, if you look at the NSES, it's blatantly with DEI and CRT, and they're calling this sexual education. Okay, so there's no sperm and eggs here, I'm talking about completely different motivation here. Another one, this is one that was interesting to me. Analyze ways systemic oppression and intersectionality impact the sexual agency of communities of color and other marginalized communities. I don't know what that has to do with sexual education. I want to read to you the definition of power in the beginning of this, the national standards, national comprehensive sexuality education standards, which the bill will be reflective of. Okay, they're a lot different than, those examples I gave, Mr. Tussi, to the ones you gave me in my email are a lot different, I think we can agree.
Sure.
Okay, but, don't please...
Well, actually, I think you'll be very happy with what Mrs. Burns has to say.
Just one minute, I just want to finish, okay? Because I, you know me, I just made a dream. The definition of power, okay, national sex education standards, this is in their glossary, and this is their definition of power. Access to resources, social power that enhance one's chances of living a relatively more comfortable, productive, and safe life. Wealth, whiteness, citizenship, patriarchy, heterosexuality, and education are a few key social mechanisms through which power upgrades. The last thing I want to say is, as far as I would love to hear, we have to say, you know how much I respect you, that's very clear, and you're an example that we can disagree and still respect each other, and I really do appreciate that. This was in the minutes, and I'm disappointed a little bit in everyone's behavior up there, because I realize, and I'm sorry, Ms. Hock, I'm sorry that I sometimes criticize your minutes, because I realize they are approved by the Board of Education. So here's what they said about me this time. Mrs. H...
When you say, when you say "they," who are you referring to? Just so I know?
Say again?
When you say "they," sir, it's not your turn to speak, thank you. When you say "they," who are you referring to?
What do you mean "they"?
You just said, "This is what they say about me."
No, what I mean, the board approves the minutes, is what I'm trying to say. They're approved by all of you. So sometimes when I come here, I'll discuss the minutes aren't reflective what I say, and I mentioned her, that she writes them, but you're approving them. This is what they said. Mrs. Hanchel expressed concerns about New York State education curriculum and cautions parents to be observant. This is what I mean by transparency. I'm not expecting, I'm just trying to get people to know what's happening, whether you believe, you want this bill or not, you want this bill. Okay? So, for instance, if they put down, Mrs. Hanchel's concerned about the K through 12 comprehensive sexuality education bill in the Senate, that would be different. You, that wouldn't be for a guest, okay?
Okay, I do have to agree with our audience member, we have extremely...
Okay, but, you know, you know what?
Went past our time.
But, you know, I do...
Well, hold on, I want to say something first, and before I let Ms. Burns speak, I just want to let you know, I am a little disappointed that you started off by accusing, I assume me, because I need to know, and Mrs. Burns, of smiling and laughing at you.
No, I wasn't referring to you.
Okay, because I'm glad for that, and if that is...
I never said your name.
No, you did not, but I did have to lean over and if that's how you interpret, I wanted to apologize, but that was not my intent.
Not really, no. And I don't think that's how I was said.
With that being said, I think Mrs. Burns could put an end to this, I would say.
Okay, I just have to defend myself one more time.
I don't...
It also said, "Mrs. Hanchel advocated for the district to hold a national day of prayer." Never did that, never did. All I asked you to do is help the students realize that May 5th was the national day of prayer, either through an electric sign just mentioning it, that's all I asked you to do. I never asked, because it comes across the community, that I wanted to teach religion in school, and that's not what I did. Prayer, either through an electric sign just mentioning it, that's all I asked you to do. I never asked, because it comes across the community, that I wanted to teach religion in school, and that's not what I did. The government sanctions National Day Prayer across the country. Okay? So when I misrepresented it, I have to say that. As far as this bill is concerned, my only concern here is that these are very young children. I don't care what people do when they're over 18 or 21, but these are young children, and I hope you push back.
So when you brought that to our attention, I did reach out to a colleague up with the New York State Council of School Superintendents, who is very tied into the advocacy thing. Used to work on, I believe it was the Assembly Floor before we went to Niskus, to ask him, what is the status? Because to be perfectly honest with you, it was on my radar, but so far off the beaten track on that radar that it surprised me a little bit. He told me that it has been around for at least a decade.
It's 2019, they struck it down, but it's back up again. Yeah.
I went back and looked to the minutes. I went back three years, and then I stopped, just a virtue of time. It has always died in committee. It is expected to die in committee in this year. So is it something that could come back in a year or two or five? That's possible? Are there people that will advocate for it because they, they feel that there is value? Yes. Are there people that will advocate against it if they don't feel that there is value? Yes. But right now, it is not an issue that is going to impact our curriculum or instruction in the West Isaf School District.
Right. But I understand that, and I agree with you, and I do agree that people should advocate for it or against it, whichever they choose. I have no problem with that. My problem is that when they put in the minutes, just say the name of the bill, educate people, that's all. You know, it's people's job, like my job as a parent or community member, is to bring it to the attention of the district. People can choose whatever they believe, I have no problem with that.
So the minutes is really just a reflection, but if you so want to address the issue and correct yourself, I do appreciate that, and I think you have definitely made your point with that regard, so I thank you very much.
The bill was written, it would be a lot different comprehensive-wise if you like, comprehension-wise, it would be a lot different, and the same with National Day Prayer, because that's very easy to misrepresent, but thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you. Our next card belongs to Mrs. Ruth Minio.
Raise your hand if you didn't know about a half of the dozen things that she talked about, if I didn't know. So in the years before the quarantine and the pandemic, it was, I know I had asked about it, but I would just want to come up there and just ask again, just to get clarification again. As far as the regions are concerned, I'm going to use the term "do no harm," because that's the terminology, but I just wanted to get some clarification about what that's going to look like this year.
So we know round the regions are actually meeting this week. I spoke with Dave Wicks, who is the district superintendent for Eastern Suffolk Posey's earlier today, to get clarification. I know there's a lot of rumors swirling as of right now, and he has absolutely no reason to believe regions will be administered in June and August as scheduled. The regions will be considering, for lack of a better expression, the expression you just used, "do no harm." How can they best ensure that our students that may have missed, that may have gaps in their instruction are not penalized? How students who may fail the regions this year are not penalized and held back from moving on to the next level of whatever it may be? So I suspect that we will have some clarity by, within two weeks, but they are meeting next week, and that exact topic is on the agenda.
So a specific question. What a student earns as a grade on the regions, will that be factored into the GPA?
We never factor...
I just wanted to just ask that.
Yeah, we never factor regions' grades into the final grades.
Okay.
The region, the regions actually frown upon that, because it's a scale score, it's not an absolute, so...
Okay. There's some talk about that, so I just wanted to just clarify that the GPA wouldn't be factored in, that the score...
We haven't done that in years.
That, I just wanted to make sure that that was still the case. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Minio, before you leave, I don't know if this is appropriate, because I obviously don't do this to every parent that comes up, just want to acknowledge your daughter last night and her performance. How wonderful she was. She's graduating, I love her, she was definitely a lovely girl, both emotional and kind of from the production, but I tip my cap, she's just phenomenal, so just wanted to let you know.
So being that you opened that door, I just wanted to just really tell you all about the wonderful experience that my daughter had with the music program. I'm not surprised that our district was recognized for that distinction. I could name every single teacher, whether my daughter had it for orchestra, or vocal motion, choral, or just even music, music theory. The teachers have taken such care in making sure that my daughter had good direction, they gave her good advice, and it, the sad thing is, is that I wish that she could take all of those teachers with her into her future.